All right, I will call the common council meeting on June 8th, 2021 to order at 7:31. First up is pledge allegiance, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Alder Allen is delayed. Alder Radifrada?
Yeah.
Alder Gerhart?
Here.
Alder Herbst? Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Strassmann?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
Alder Wheeler?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Next, we have public appearances and agenda items, new appointments, proclamations. I know we have a couple people on non-agenda items, just a reminder that everyone has three minutes to speak. Chad, who do you want to go first? Jay? All right, Jay, whenever you're ready, go right ahead.
Okay, actually Sue and me are sharing the testimony and Sue would like to proceed first and then I would follow. That would be okay with you?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, Sue, you can go ahead.
Okay, good evening, members. I'm Sue Easterday, 2731 Osmondson Road. Thank you for the opportunity to offer these comments tonight under public appearances under for non-agenda items. Jay Hockmuth and I are submitting them on behalf of Tom Thorison, Rita Henrichs, Cheryl Strassmann, Joe Arida, and ourselves. I'll present a few comments and Jay will conclude so that we do not exceed time limits. On May 25th, the council approved the typical section for Lacy Road reconstruction project after approving an amendment that made three revisions to the typical section recommended by staff. The revisions are A: limit the width of the multi-use path to 10 feet. B: delete the rough grading for a future five-foot sidewalk on the south side, and C: add two-foot bike lane buffer strips on both sides. We hope the next time the council approves a typical section for a road project that differs from that recommended by staff, a more transparent process is used to assure all residents interested in the project are afforded an opportunity to offer information on the proposed revisions to the staff recommendations before the council votes. And now Jay will continue.
Hi, my name is Jay Hockmuth. I live at 20888 Osmondson Road. More specifically, to assure the approval process for a typical road section is more transparent, we hope the next time similar circumstances occur, the council votes to postpone the decision until the next meeting unless unanimous consent is available so that interested residents can express their opinion on the proposed revisions to the staff recommendation. A good example of why an improved process is needed is the decision to add two-foot wide bike lane buffer strips to the Lacy Road project. Adding the buffer strips is contrary to the recommendations offered by the Lacy Road Advisory Group on March 31st, the Transportation and Transit Commission on April 14th, the Board of Public Works on May 17th, and in three staff memos dated April 17 and 26 and May 25. There are many reasons for these recommendations formulated by those groups. Whether the alders who voted for the buffer strips were aware of the reasons is unknown. Also unknown is whether the vote tally would have changed if all alders were aware of all reasons. In conclusion, we hope the council decides to try out the process the next time the approval of a typical road section is being considered. If it works well, after any needed improvements are made, perhaps it could be codified as a city ordinance to achieve a higher level of transparency for decisions of this nature. Thank you for considering these comments tonight.
All right, thank you both. Chad, those are the only ones we have, right? All right, then I have a couple of proclamations. We don't have anyone here from the public, so I'm going to read them, but then I'm going to invite people from the council if you'd like to do a photo with me that we can utilize on social media. We can do a quick photo. I will start with recognizing lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer month. Whereas, Pittsburgh is dedicated to ensuring their LGBTQ+ community and its allies have a safe and inclusive environment to celebrate diverse sexual orientations and gender identities. And whereas, LGBTQ+ Month recognizes that Pittsburgh and the global lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community have made great strides in the recent years toward full equality. And whereas, LGBTQ+ Pride Month raises awareness about Pittsburgh's lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community and their contributions to Pittsburgh's unique and diverse tapestry in a positive and productive manner. And whereas, June has become a symbolic month in which lesbians, gay men, bisexual people, transgender, queer, and supporters come together in various celebrations of pride. And whereas, the rainbow flag also knows that LGBTQ+ Pride Flag, or Gay Pride Flag, has been used since the 1970s as a symbol of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer pride, and LGBTQ+ social movements. And whereas, flying the rainbow flag at City Hall throughout the year further symbolizes the city's celebration of diversity and support for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Aaron Richardson, Mayor of the City of Pittsburgh, along with the Pittsburgh City Council, issue this proclamation and hereby declare the month of June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the City of Pittsburgh. Invite everyone to reflect on ways we can all can live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding. Proclaim this 8th day of June 2021. I just want to say one thing is that is mentioned in here is that last year was the first year we flew the flag during the month of June. And when the month was over, I was talking with Sarah Olson, our HR director, about the flag and when we should take it down. And as we talked about it, we really thought, you know, even though this is the month where we celebrate this, it is something that we want to make sure that we're inclusive all times. And so it is something we decided, no, let's actually leave this up year-round to show that we are always welcoming. It's not just during a certain month or a certain time period that it is something that we want to always be inclusive and want the community and people who visit our community to know that we are always inclusive. And so we did leave that up and continue to leave that up, as you see here. We did do a ceremony, a quick little ceremony on the first. In fact, TV recorded that. I don't think it's out yet on the Fact TV social media page, but that will be out as well. So I just want to make sure people knew that as well. And I don't know if anyone has anything they want to add to that before we do the next one. All right, seeing nothing. Then we also have another proclamation, recognizing Juneteenth Celebration Day. Whereas, Juneteenth is the day marking the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas, when Union Army General Gordon Granger landed at the Texas Port City of Galveston in 1865 as the Civil War drew to a close, one of his first actions was to read General Order Number Three, which stated that all slaves are free and that former masters and slaves have absolute equality of personal and property rights. And whereas, following his statement, June 19th, Juneteenth, became the emancipation date of those long-suffering for freedom. And whereas, since then, as the oldest known celebration commemorating the end of slavery in America, the tradition of celebrating Juneteenth has remained strong well into the 21st century to recognize the triumph of the human spirit over the cruelty of slavery and to honor the strength, endurance, and faith of African-American ancestors. And whereas, it is imperative that citizens in Pittsburgh and across our state continue to work towards a more unjust Wisconsin, as well as join together to acknowledge a time in our history to carry on the nation's ideals of equality and democracy and celebrate the joys of liberty and justice for every American citizen. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Aaron Richardson, along with members of the Pittsburgh City Council, do hereby recognize June 19th, 2021, as Juneteenth Celebration Day in the City of Pittsburgh, remind individuals of the importance of this and to celebrate African-American history and culture while continuing to promote diversity, equality, and a strong sense of community in our city and state. And I know on the 16th, the Senior Center is doing a celebration. And I think we have an employee who works in the Senior Center who every year sends an email out to staff talking about the importance of Juneteenth. And I'll have Mike just talk a little bit about that celebration in a second, but I know that we actually are going to, there's a flag also for Juneteenth. And I think at 4 o'clock on the 16th, kind of in coordination with the Senior Center event, we are going to also raise a Juneteenth flag and have that up for a month. And do you want to talk a little bit about the event, Mike, maybe?
Sure. Sure. This is, let's celebrate Juneteenth Freedom Day. This is going to be on Wednesday, June 16th, from noon to 1:00 PM at the Pittsburgh Senior Center. And they've got a delicious soul food meal from Melly Mel's Soul Food. And listen to this, fried chicken, baked mac and cheese, collard greens with smoked turkey, cornbread, red velvet cake, and strawberry soda is going to be available for purchase. It's $10 for people that are over 60 years old and $15 for those under 60 years old. You're supposed to make your reservation by June 11th. You can call 270-4290 or register online at www.fitchburgwi.gov. Then you must go to the Senior Center for making your reservations, but it sounds like a delicious meal. I know Joyce and I are signing up for it, so I hope you all can join us.
George, you have a question?
Yeah, I also wanted to acknowledge Ms. Annie Weatherby Flowers. She's been sort of the lead on the Juneteenth celebration, you know, here in Dane County for past few decades. And there's going to be a series of events, you know, throughout our region starting on June 16th, so I encourage folks in the public to make an effort to attend those.
And then I know that Fact TV likes to have photos to use on social media, so if anyone would like to maybe join me out in front of the dais here for a photo that they could use, that'd be great. You don't have to, but if you'd like to. Maybe we'll just have people rearrange their standing for a second.
Are you going?
Just give her the picture.
I could hold it. Oh, one last.
No, you don't have to.
We were debating?
No, Tracy, you are right.
I have the both proclamations up at once. All right, that is all we have for that. So next is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
Move by Jay, second, but I think I heard Joe first. Is there anything that people would like to remove? I think Dave, did you, or Julia, you got one you want to?
Move five and 11.
Five and 11, pull those out separately. Okay, anything else? All right, seeing nothing else. Then all in favor of approving everything except five and 11, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay? All right, those are approved. Let's start with five. Julia, would you want to change on five?
I'm coming to, because we have a lot of project there.
All right. Any other discussion on that one?
Second.
Motion by Julia, seconded by Jay to add, to approve with parks added to it. Is there, all in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay? All right, and then number 11, Julia?
I would like to move, refer 11 to Parks Commission. I know that we can only discuss there because Plan Council and also can't vote.
On that, but I would like to, I would like to know because it's a minor amendment, if we can refer it out to Parks.
All right, so is that a motion to approve with parks?
Second.
All right, cited by Jay. All in favor, say aye.
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 And oppose, nay? All right, that is approved. Moving along, lots of liquor licenses. It's that time of year. Administration report, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple announcements for you. There will be a CIP meeting on Monday, June 14th at 6:00 PM. Department heads will appear via Zoom. We had the groundbreaking today for the Limerick Townhome Senior Apartments, 127 units, affordable, 27 townhome units and 100 senior apartments at Sine Road and Lacy Road. The postal contract station at Hatchery Hill remains open, so please continue to patronize and send your business their way. The current operator is negotiating with a couple of potential operators where the current contract would be transferred to them, but we're waiting to hear word on that. We had good news last week, Friday, the AMC Theaters opened in Pittsburgh, so take your family, if you're looking for a nice, cool place to go, take your family there for the latest movies that are out. We're glad to see that open back up. The Terrace Point Apartments on Fish Hatchery Road on the former juice plant dairy site are open. We hear that they're already 60 to 70% leased at that spot up there, so it's off to a great, great start with the residential units. The Parks Department reported that they received five proposals for the inclusive playground. And then I just wanted to add that the Town of Madison page on our city website is up and operating there. I think I sent the link out to you, but just for the public as well. If you go to our main page and go under the community header and do the dropdown to Town of Madison, we've got a great frequently asked questions section, a department overview, and then there's even a question information form that would get routed to the Clerk's Department and then get routed to the appropriate city department or staff to respond to that question or request for, for information. Thanks to Lisa and Sonya in the Planning Department and also IT for helping to get that up and running for us.
Any questions for Mike? Yeah, Julia.
Comment in the Town of Madison page, can you add the link to the video, that nice video that we have about Pittsburgh?
Yeah, I'm checking into that.
Okay.
Right now, yeah, I have to, I know you had mentioned it to me.
Yeah.
But I just need to check on the technology and work with the appropriate people.
That one is great, that video, you know, so, okay.
All right, seeing nothing else. Plan Commissioner Randy, anything?
No, we meet next Tuesday at the usual time.
All right, Board of Public Works, Dave?
I'd like to move approval of Resolution R. 10721 authorizing KAL Engineering Contract Amendment Number Four for Fish Hatchery Road Design and Construction Inspection.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella. Did Public Works approve?
We did, and, and just.
Can I just ask Finance to finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, you are, go ahead, Dave.
When the project, you know, we rebid the project to get a better price and it broke into several, into two years. And so KNL had, had a contract to provide engineering oversight, or site oversight. And so that went from one year to two years, the amount of hours increased substantially. So that is the change, that's what this amendment or change order is for. They provided substantial documentation of their costs. You know, I don't like change orders, but I can't. If a schedule changes, that's going to happen. And there's no, I'm in the consulting business, so I'm well aware of that. I wish we didn't have one, but looking at it, I, I agree with their request for additional funds.
Any questions or comments? Yeah, Julia.
So I, from where is the extra funding is going to come from?
Dave, do you know the answer? Would you like?
I do not have that answer.
Misty, oh, Misty, Misty's online.
Hello, everybody. So the money for this was budgeted and included in the CIP for 2021. So this change order is included in the current budget for the project.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing I want to mention, I really like the budget that include here because we can see how much we are spending in this specific project. It would be nice to see if we can have like a, at the end, when Fish Hatchery Road is finished, a reconciliation of the $30 million that we are spending on the road and to determine where we are, you know, because we are, you know, I would like to see where we are right now on, on that expenditure, you know, like in the budget, you know, if we are like, how much money we need to, or debt do we need to issue and, or we are, you know, what is the status of the reconciliation of this Fish Hatchery Road? Because I think we have this change order all the time and I would like to see how much is adding to the budget, the original budget, how it's affecting that. So that's it. But I like, really like the extra information that they, they add to the change order, so.
All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And oppose, nay? All right, that's approved. Anything else, Dave?
No.
All right, Park Commission, Julia.
So in Parks, we met on June 3rd. And one of the thing that we discussed is we changed the time of the starting of the meeting. So we used, so the, the meeting used to start at 7:00, but now we are moving to 6:00. And then we determined also to have like, like a allocated time, you know, like because sometimes those meetings go for hours. So we determined that our max is two hour. So we need to be done by that time and this is good. And then we, we talked about the Stone Prairie Park planning update. We have an update about that. We talked about the splash pad concession, the corner ice. We are trying to see if they can come again this summer. And also we discussed about all the resolution that they came through council. And last, our next step is when we are going to start the discussion about park and open splash plan update. We need to do an update and we need to start talking about that. And what else? I don't want to lose anything. That's it for now. Oh, the other thing is we need to start naming parks or for new parks. So if you have any idea of how to name parks in your district, please send us your feedback. So that one is going to be part, we have a couple of parks that we need to, they need a name. So, so, you know, we would like to have your feedback, especially in your district, you know, it's something that, a specific, you know, event or a person that, you know, so send us that feedback to Scott Endall. We are looking for that, so. And also we discussed the naming, we have a request to name the inclusive playground. And then we are planning to continue with that discussion. But Communication Innovations requests that we name the inclusive playground, Paul's Playground, in, in memory of one of the patient that used to live in Pittsburgh and he was a person with disability and, you know, and so we are going to consider him when we do the, all the naming of the parks too. So, but you know, so that's it.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Got a question?
Formal mechanism or procedure for, for naming a park? Any process in place?
No, we don't.
No.
I think a lot of times the developer opposes it.
All right, thank you.
Because I want to mention something. The Raveza has a lot of idea how to name the, the parks, but they are all kind of weird vegetable names that, yeah. And so I think this is what I think we need to, people in District Four, District Three, please come with new ideas.
All right. All right, move along to Library Board.
We, we haven't had a meeting recently, but we do have one next week.
All right, great. Commission on aging well.
Our next meeting is Thursday morning at 8:30. A little update from the last time. In May, the center opened with some limited service, you know, for, with reservations. The last meeting Jill presented her plan for growth and asked for members to be an ad hoc committee for, for planning growth. And she wants to, there's a lot of new senior housing in Pittsburgh, plus the, the Town of Madison, and she would like to see that put into the, the growth plan. The Friends of the Senior Center had a fundraiser at the, up at Hy-Vee, a pancake breakfast, and they raised some money and just add some of that money they used to put flowers in, out in front of the Senior Center. So that's all I have.
I know this morning Jill mentioned that they were hoping to slowly increase attendance and, and people showing up at the Senior Center, but the seniors had a different idea. And so pretty much immediately, it's been pretty full and pretty busy, just like it was before. People were waiting anxiously to start using the Senior Center again. So they're going full, full speed ahead.
Erin, she did mention, I think they are delivering meals five days a week and they need volunteers, if anyone knows of anyone.
Great. RCC?
So RCC meets tomorrow at, so hang on, just let me check that time. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June 9th at 6:30 PM. This is one of the additional meetings we added this year and we're going to have a long focus on stormwater. Our stormwater engineer, Claudia, is going to talk about stormwater management concepts, site, a specific vegetation management plan for the different stormwater sites in the area, and also assessment policies. So if you're interested in learning more about stormwater in the community, for the council or for members of the public, it should be a really interesting session. I'll try to give like a quick overview at our next council meeting during this time period, but I do encourage you to check it out if you're interested. Another thing from RCC, the Swan Creek Monitoring Station, the USGS Monitoring Station, was successfully installed. And I hope I can maybe get some pictures in the near future. They're going to do a ribbon cutting and maybe we can kind of show off those a little bit, but that's an exciting update from the summer.
All right, what about TTC?
So Transportation and Transit meets on Thursday, June 10th, this Thursday, at 6:30 PM. And we have some items for discussion, which I'll review next time. And then on a different note, the, the Regional Transportation Plan for the Greater Madison Area is kind of under, they're kind of launching a new effort to, to start that regional planning for really the, like looking towards 2050. And so there is a survey online, the Regional Transportation Plan, RTP 2050 Public Survey for the Greater Madison Area, that I encourage you to check out. They are going to be giving away $10, $25 gift cards if you do participate, but it's really a trend to collect information about how people use transportation. Over the last 20 years, between 20, 2000 and 2020, Dane County grew by about 27%, our population grew. And we're expecting significant growth between now and 2050. And so really, we need to do a lot of planning to make sure that we're growing in a efficient way as a region so that we can accommodate that growth and also, you know, accommodate all those influx of new jobs. So I can give you more updates about this. There will be public meetings coming up, but the first thing that's happening is the public survey, so I encourage you to check that out. And I wonder maybe we can, I can, maybe we can get it on the Pittsburgh social media sites. I don't know, we'll, we'll talk about it, but thank you.
All right, Seera.
We met on May 27. So we have guests. Do you remember that we have a presentation about that pilot project, the housing, that HNA Housing Advisor are doing? So there was a survey, so they, they shared with us the result of their survey. So we went through that exercise and then the consensus for the product design based on the survey is that we want a two-story, two-car new townhouse style, approximately 1,025 to 1,400 square feet, including two bathrooms, three-bedroom, when composite siding, basic windows, upgrade counters, hardwood floor, and the price range is between $20,025 to $265,000. The area is in the North Fish Hatchery Road. It was one of the area that we should, you know, that it was a consensus. It's going to be more for workforce housing with a median of 80% to 100% of the housing area median income for a family of three with, regarding to the 220 hut data. So, so this project is coming, is going to come to council for approval in a couple of months. They are coming on July 22nd for a, you know, for a presentation. So this is a great first step and I hope that you like it, especially the new alder that they haven't had the opportunity to know about this project. So the other thing that we discussed, I did a presentation about the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative Report, the grant review. So, and I want to continue to be the liaison.
Um, so, um, and I want to continue be the liaison of SIDA to the Healthy Neighborhood, um, Committee. We also, um, as you saw in the consent agenda, SIDA voted to bring back the Forward Fitchburg Business Boost Loan Program. Um, so, and you can have the update, uh, and also we talked about the, there is a group of people that, maybe Randy can explain this in your report, Randy. About, uh, there is a group that they are talking about broadband, uh, they meet regularly. Um, um, so the idea is how do we take advantage of all the money, relief money and that is coming through the federal government, so, uh, ARPA funds and state, um, uh, funds, uh, how we can apply for, uh, grants, uh, to get some funding for, uh, Fitchburg. So, uh, Randy is part of the committee, so he can talk about more of that. So, um, what else? Um, then we talk about, uh, we have an update from the Economy Director, Economy Development Director, Mike Zimmerman. He gave us an update, uh, of, um, everything is happening in the city of Fitchburg, like, uh, uh, you know, park banks, um, they are going to, uh, at the corner of Fish Hatch, um, Ringway Cross is, is will open on July first and the Starbucks is already open. Um, so, um, there are some people interested in the, in the T number eleven, um, on the High Heart Property, corner of Fish Hatchery and Lazy Road. Um, so, so there's a lot of, um, a lot of, um, you know, interested in, in people investing in the city. And also we discussed the, um, room tax. We have the number from the, the first quarter. We collected thirty-five thousand dollars and, and last year in twenty twenty, we collected seventy-four thousand dollars. So I, you can see there was a fifty-two percent reduction. So this is still, um, uh, room taxes, is, is, you know, is still a struggle, uh, struggling with the numbers. So we hope that in the next couple, in the second quarter, the third quarter, we can see, um, better numbers. So that's it for now. Did I forget something, Mike? No?
All right.
I don't know if Randy want to add?
Well, Ag and Rural Affairs, I think you might talk about it there in your, uh, the report. Go ahead, Randy.
Well, first of all, Ag and Rural Affairs meets next Tuesday at, uh, four P M. But, uh, as, uh, Julia mentioned, uh, Roger Kohe and myself from Ag and Rural Affairs have been assigned the, the project of, uh, of, of seeking out or, or providing options for future broadband to the rural area of Fitchburg. That, and currently there, there's some question as to how much of the rural area has broadband. Um, but Roger and myself have been working with city staff, Mike Zimmerman, Joyce Frye, Jer- Jeremy Crosby, Matt Prow, and, um, hopefully I haven't left anybody out. Uh, but we have explored a number of options. Uh, we, uh, one being Mad Rep. And, uh, we had a presentation last Friday from their vendor and, um, it was an interesting presentation. Um, however, we feel that we need to look at, uh, well, we need to get, gather some additional data. And currently we're working on the survey. And that's been going through city staff, all the, to you, Mayor, and, um, uh, we hope to have, send that out relatively soon. We're trying to secure the funding right now. So, or find the money. Um, I think those are all the comments I have right now.
And I know, I think Wade also is helping out.
I'm sorry, yes, Wade, and that's why, yeah, Wade Thompson, yes. And, uh, city staff has been very helpful. I do appreciate it.
More to come on broadband and rural.
Yes, it's a, it's, it's a very complicated issue, uh, trying to secure the federal and state funding. Yeah, there's some deadlines to be met, so we're very well, well aware of those, those deadlines, yeah.
All right, thank you. EMS, Shannon?
Um, we meet on, uh, next Thursday at seven o'clock.
All right. Bicycle Committee, Jill?
Yeah, um, a couple of updates. Um, there was a, um, an event in Marlboro Park, which is in Madison, but it's, you know, right up against, um, District Room. And, um, that happened, uh, it was a ride-the-drive event. So Ride the Drive, for anybody who doesn't know, is an event that, you know, promotes biking. Oftentimes, you know, streets will be closed down in order to, um, allow for, you know, people to ride around the neighborhood. Um, unfortunately, because of a lack of volunteers, they were, the city of Madison had to cut down routes and only include routes within the park. It was still a successful event. Um, but I communicated with, uh, Madison staff, uh, as well as a couple of folks here on the Fitchburg staff and said that, you know, if there was an interest next year in collaborating and maybe closing down some of the, um, streets, uh, on the Fitchburg side, that I would be glad to, um, you know, put that offer out. Um, so, you know, hopefully we'll have a, a bigger event next year. Um, the other thing that I have is, um, Ordinance Twenty Twenty-One oh zero six, um, eliminating mandatory bicycle registration by repealing Sections Two Eighty-three to, through Two Eighty-six of Chapter Sixty-eight, Article Five, Division Two of Fitchburg General Code of Ordinances.
Are you moving to approve?
Second.
Does a motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve, yep.
Sent by Julia. Uh, do you want to explain what this is, Jill?
Sure. So, um, the Bicycle Committee in a, an effort to, um, achieve gold status uh, for the city of Fitchburg, uh, it ha- has been sort of reviewing all the different policies that we have. And, um, you know, one of those policies is making, uh, biking equitable for all. And, um, we have a municipal code, um, in which people apply, um, and get their bikes registered. Um, we, you know, ran numbers, ran data with the, um, police department and, um, you know, the, the cost does not, um, give much financial benefit, or the, the, the revenue generated doesn't, has a pretty negligible, negligible benefit. Um, and, you know, the, the cost behind having a fee for registering bikes, um, is, you know, potentially folks who may not be able to afford, um, the registration may be, um, dissuaded from, from biking. So, um, you know, essentially the Bike Committee, you know, ran this by, um, the Police Department. Um, they were in agreement of it. We had a discussion about, you know, encouraging people to, um, register their bikes for, um, but not have that fee attached to it. Um, and, uh, um, we're putting this forth to the council.
I know there's less than ten people per year that register their bikes right now. I think it's actually less than five.
Yeah.
So there's, like, no one really registers a bike anyway. And we're looking at a free, something free that people could do online instead.
Yeah.
Gabriella and then Dave?
Is there a, I mean, I, I'm definitely in support of this ever hav- after having read through the materials. I, my question though, is there a benefit to registering your bike? I know there have been bike thefts recently. Does that, like, help you recover a bike if it is stolen?
There is, there is a benefit to registering it and, you know, I think we can promote that. Um, and if we have a system that's a little bit easier to do so, um, you know, potentially more people will do it. And, um, I think we have to just think about what kind of mechanisms we'll advertise.
Yeah, theft is probably the biggest one. Dave?
Yeah, good point, Jill. Um, I would encourage anyone that has a bike, when you buy a bike, take a picture of your bike and then take a picture of the, you know, wherever the serial number is on there, so that if it, if it is stolen, you might have a small chance of recovering it, or you can, um, when you're looking on these Facebook and Craigslist or whatever, you, it makes it easier for you to find your, find your bike, or you can post on there. Don't buy a bike with this number or whatever. So, uh, please, please do that, you know. No different than the possessions in your home. In case you have a fire, you should videotape your, uh, possessions. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, and I know, um, a couple of members of the, um, Bike Committee had mentioned that, you know, just on a whim, they had registered their bikes and had gotten it stolen and actually, you know, got it back. So, um, you'd definitely, definitely encourage folks to, to do that.
All right. Seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, that's approved. Anything else, Jill?
Nothing else.
All right, uh, Tree Advisory?
The Tree Advisory Committee meets to, this Thursday, June tenth at four P M. And we have two items on for discussion, the North Stoner Prairie Park Survey and, uh, and the continuation of our discussion of the tree preservation ordinance.
All right, Landmark Preservation?
Um, I've got nothing.
All right, Housing Advisory?
We, oh, sorry.
Our next meeting is June fourteenth at five P M.
All right, Healthy Neighborhoods?
Sorry, I can't read. Um, uh, we are having a meeting on the twenty-ninth.
All right. Uh, I think I'll just add it right here. I did actually, uh, email staff, uh, earlier today asking kind of what are the steps to kind of formalize this into a standing committee. Right now it's technically an ad hoc committee. And so I've asked staff kind of what are, what are, what are kind of best next steps so that we can formalize that into a, a standing committee. All right, uh, Stoner Park Planning Committee, Randy?
Yes, we meet next Wednesday, the sixteenth at seven P M. Nothing to report.
All right, what about Finance?
Okay. Yeah, a number of items. Approval of Bills. Uh, first, first one, detailed review of all checks issued. Checks One Two Two One Six Four dash One Two 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 Zero Seven, May sixteenth through the thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-one totaling nine hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and four dollars and eighteen cents. Is there any questions? All right. Next one, detailed review of all A C H payments, May, May first through the thirty-first, twenty twenty-one totaling fourteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and twelve cents. Questions, discussion? Hearing none. Review of peak card transactions for cycle ending May sixth, twenty twenty-one. Total of two hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and twelve cents. Discussion, questions? Dave, go ahead.
Five, four, uh, twenty twenty-one. It's four hundred and seventy-nine dollars to the Y M C A membership. I'm just curious, does, is that in our contract that our employees', uh, membership is covered?
Yeah, I believe that's the firefighter's contract.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Misty. The police officer?
Fast enough.
Police Department, sorry. Police Department, yep. I knew it was one of those, I guess, the wrong one. All right. All right.
Thank you.
Keep going, Randy.
All right. Motion to approve Resolution R dash one zero eight dash twenty-one, adopting the twenty twenty-two annual city budget schedule.
Second.
Sent by Gabriella. And you want to speak to this, Randy?
Uh, yeah, I can find it here. Just want to make sure. It's pretty simple, straightforward, but it's the, uh, resolution providing, uh, the schedule to be used to accomplish the adoption of the city's budget. I don't know if Misty wants to add.
Misty, want to add anything?
The only thing I'd add is that the bottom of the draft schedule, it lists the changes from last year. And for the most part, this is pretty consistent with other years. Um, the only two changes is, uh, one, we made the timing pretty consistent with two years ago and before. Last year, we actually had five Tuesdays, so the schedule changed a bit. And then the bigger change is, uh, the health insurance premiums always come out around September fifteenth. And in the past, the mayor's budget was released before those premiums were known. But we made it now so that first we learned about that, uh, pretty substantial number ahead of time. And then we put up the mayor's proposed budget after that. So it's a little bit of a delay there, but doesn't really have much effect on the overall schedule.
All right.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes.
Randy, anything else you want?
No.
Did you add? All right. All right, Gabriella?
Um, they do have the, uh, the two dates for the Finance Committee presentations. Um, Day one and Day two, October fifth and sixth. And just for the new council members that haven't been on the council before, uh, those are good meetings to attend in terms of getting a, a full scope of what the budget's about. And I've always really enjoyed them. Staff does a really great job, so, uh, I'll certainly be there and hope all of you will be there too.
All right, Jay?
Uh, I know previously we had always reserved the Wednesday night after adoption, uh, after, after the Tuesday night for adoption, just in case discussion went till midnight or one o'clock. We would have that night available as a night that we could meet and finish it up. Um, I see that we don't have that on here now.
Yeah, I think that's because the committee of the whole is when most of the discussion is supposed to happen. We do have some time limits on that night to help prevent it from going until, hopefully going until two, three o'clock in the morning. I think, you know, once we see the number of amendments, i- if we feel like we want to schedule that or hold that, we could do that at that point in time. If a hundred amendments come through or something like that, then we could do that. But we do have some time limits in place on that night to help further that discussion. Other questions or comments? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that is approved. Anything else for Finance this time?
Um, well, I was going to hold off for the comments, but just a reminder that, uh, next Monday, June fourteenth, uh, there is a, um, uh, Finance Committee, which will, uh, all council members are invited. It's regarding the, uh, Department Heads, the C I P. So, and that's at six P M. Um, is that correct, Misty?
It is.
Yeah, okay. And then, uh, Misty is also working on the, uh, three point two million dollars, um, uh, A R P A funding. And I believe that informa- or that information is due back in on the eighteenth. But, uh, the council will be involved with the, uh, how the dollars are spent.
Yeah, I think that's an important thing. She, Misty told me earlier today is that, you know, we're getting a little over three million dollars from the A R P funding. We have to essentially sign for it on June eighteenth, which we just found out. So we would have liked to essentially have council say, yeah, we want this money, but because of just finding out now, we couldn't get on the agenda. We're pretty sure that everyone wants us to say, yeah, we want the three million dollars, so we're just going to sign it. But I want to make sure that you knew about it.
Hold off on it and drag our feet, yeah.
Yeah, it's a quick deadline for that. We still don't even have all the details yet, so it's kind of weird. But in order to actually accept it, we do need to sign some paperwork. So I want to make sure people knew that.
Otherwise, that's, that's all I have from Finance.
All right, Personnel?
No report. Our next meeting is July fourteenth.
All right, what about Public Safety?
Uh, we approved the, uh, operator's license for Allison Donahue. She came before the board, uh, along with, uh, someone to speak on her behalf. And, uh, so we.
All right, I think you need to make a motion to approve her then.
I move we, uh, approve the operator's license, uh, for Allison Mae Donahue.
Second.
Sent by Joe. Anything else you want to add on that, Dave?
No.
All right, any questions? All in favor of approving Allison, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? All right, that's approved. Anything else then, Dave?
No.
All right, Mayor's Report. Couple of things. Uh, thank you for those who attended the Memorial Day Celebration. Uh, I just wanted to also thank all the veterans who were there, either doing the different ceremonial pieces or just there to observe. I wanted to thank the guest speaker, Jana Woodhouse, who was in the Navy for five years, also my sister. She did a fantastic job and spoke about sacrifice. I also want to thank staff, especially Joyce Frye, or Frye, sorry. She'll hurt me if I say that wrong. Joyce Frye, she, uh, put a lot of work into the event, as always. And so it was a really nice event. A little different this year because of COVID. Usually we have a meal and stuff like that, but we did everything out at the memorial, which was a good showcase for that and all the improvements we're doing out there. Oh, Fact TV, yeah, Fact TV, thank you for covering that. And they, uh, have put some stuff on social media too, if you want to see the event on there. A few other things. You saw the C I P came out and Randy talked about the meetings Monday night. Amendments are due in about a month. And also I found out today that we're going to have three openings on the Board of Review at the end of the month. And this is kind of an important time for Board of Review. So if you know anyone who's interested, it's not something that people typically apply for and want to do. I'm going to message some people who have applied maybe for some other committees and see if they would be interested and willing to help us with this. But it's an important thing, important committee that, uh, we need some people on very quickly. Actually, next meeting, we would have to hopefully approve those people to take over. Uh, you maybe have seen redistricting continues to be held up by politics. And so we're kind of waiting to see right now when we're actually going to get that information, when it's going to be effective. I know there's a push to say, oh, it, the redistricting is not going to be effective for next spring like it's supposed to be. So we're kind of waiting to see what happens with that, because that's a big hassle. And that is all I have. But for all the reports, we'll start with District Three today. Jay, you would be first. Oh, yeah, sorry.
I was wondering, are we going to appoint, are you going to appoint the, that redistricting committee in like the meantime while we're waiting for it? Or are we going to wait until it's ready to go before we make those appointments?
I pretty much know who it is, but I kind of, I'm going to wait only because just in case those people have a conflict on when we actually get to do the redistricting. So, I mean, I know who it is and I haven't talked to those people yet. But I'll find out when we're actually going to do the redistricting. I mean, I know who it is and I haven't talked to those people yet, but I'll find out when we're actually going to do the redistricting, so I can tell them, hey, because it's gonna be essentially a month, month and a half of a little bit, kind of, they're gonna have a lot of meetings, it's gonna be a little intense, and so I don't want to say, can you do it, and then it ends up being when they have a two week vacation. So, I, I know who they are, who I'm gonna ask anyway. I haven't confirmed with all those people yet, but without knowing the timing, I, I just am afraid that I'll say yes, they'll say yes, and then not be able to do it, so. All right, seeing nothing else, Jay?
I have nothing to report.
All right, Shannon?
I don't either.
All right, Jim?
Nothing to report.
Randy?
Uh, I just want to comment on, um, Mike Zimmerman's earlier comment regarding, uh, the limerick. We, we did meet out there today. Um, I had the opportunity to speak on, on your behalf, Mayor, and, um, Alder Aratafrotta was there as well. Mike Zimmerman, Joyce Frye. It was a great turnout, not just from the city, but, uh, from all of the partners that were involved in that, in the, in the project. Uh, it's a great project, um, a hundred plus, uh, a hundred senior, uh, affordable houses, housing and, uh, twenty seven affordable family townhouses, so, um, it's gonna be a great project, so I just wanted to comment. Thank you.
All right, Dave?
Um, only thing I have to report, if you get a chance, stop at Jamestown, uh, Eagle Park. The community garden really looks nice, you know, people are coming together. We have, I think next year we're gonna double it. I, it's something I'd like to see us expand at other parks, especially with the, in the smart growth areas, people don't have any room for, for a garden or very limited, and, uh, um, we're getting very positive response from it.
Joe?
Light doesn't come on, okay. Um, I got a few, so, um, there was a really successful, um, event in Ally Park. Um, we had a, uh, D J, we had food. We had, uh, gave away almost a hundred bikes, um, thanks to Free Bikes for Kids. Um, we also had Madison Reading Project, um, come and give away about a hundred, uh, books, and, um, just a really positive response from the neighborhood. There are actually, um, probably about fifteen or twenty small, um, kid bikes, probably for the age of like two, three years old, um, that are at the Boys and Girls Club, um, so if somebody has an interest, uh, in those or distributing those, um, please, uh, get in touch with me. Thanks to, um, to Dave for helping out and jumping in the dunk tank of, right after I did. And, um, looking to have more events like that in the future. Um, there is a writing contest for the Ally Dunn's Marsh Neighborhood Association Newsletter. Um, you can turn in, if you're a, a kid under seventeen, you can turn in, um, an article about any topic you'd like, um, to the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, if that letter is written in Spanish and English, um, you'll be, you'll get thirty five dollars, and if you write it just in one language, you'll get, uh, twenty five dollars. Um, the next episode of D One All Stars is out, um, with, um, interview with Dr. Jasmine Sapata. Um, that'll be available on Fact TV until July seventeenth. Um, this month, I interviewed, uh, Darcy Luma, who is a consultant and life coach. It was a really fun interview. Um, I've never interviewed a life coach before, and, um, that will be out starting, um, later on in this month. We're shooting for the seventeenth of June. And then, um, next month, I'll be interviewing, uh, my brother-in-law, uh, Luis Duran, who's a, um, musical artist as well as an avid biker. Um, the Latino Academy of Workforce Development is having their G E D and C D L graduation um, on June twelfth at eleven A M. Um, that's the Saturday. If you are interested in attending virtually, you can go to the Latino Academy of Workforce Development's website. Finally, shout out to, uh, Madison Reading Project. It's not in District One or in Fitchburg, but it's right outside of the border, um, near Fitch Hattery Road. Um, they have opened a new book center. Um, it's at one, three, three, seven Greenway Cross, um, Suite one eighty six. Um, obviously Madison Reading Project does really great outreach by taking, you know, used books as well as new books and, um, giving them out to schools, community organizations, um, all types of orgs, um, but having that location sort of similar, close to so many schools, close to so many community organizations is really gonna be a, a great asset for our region. Um, and then finally, there is a, um, an event, it's right outside of the district, but it's gonna be a Funk's Pub. Um, it is sponsored by Varoqua Beer Company, and it's essentially an event where, um, there's gonna be music, and if you show your vaccine card, um, you can actually get a free beer, so, um, I encourage folks to stop by. It'll be from eleven A M, um, to seven P M at Funk's Pub, which is right off of, um, Seminole this Saturday. Yep, so that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Julia?
Uh, okay, for District Two, um, I want to report about the inclusive program. We have, um, the, the group, uh, had a meeting today uh, with the engineer, um, uh, Jake Johnson, um, um, staff. So yesterday, uh, the, the bids were closed and we received five bids. Uh, all they look very promising, um, on budget, so it's great. So, so, so what we're looking is, uh, the next step is gonna be, we are gonna narrow down, uh, staff is gonna narrow down the, um, the options. And then we want to have a public participation, so we don't know, it's, we are, we are gonna do it through a survey, and also we would like to do an open house, um, to show the different designs, so people can, um, can vote for which is the best, uh, you know, option. Uh, and then the idea is to, um, is every single move forward, uh, to be, uh, by, oh, you know, no, I don't, I cannot say that because they told me not to say anything like that. Uh, the idea is that, uh, the idea is, is every single move, uh, along, we can, uh, you know, um, we can start doing some installation or working in, during the fall, that's it. Okay, so this is great. Um, the fundraising continues, so you haven't donated, I can send you the link, okay? So, uh, the other thing I want to say is, um, I want to, to say thank you to, uh, two people, two staff, uh, that, um, one, I received a letter a couple of weeks ago, you know that we have a tunnel going through, uh, Fish Hatch, uh, no, under McKee? And I received a letter, uh, that from a resident, um, that lives, I think they live in one of those assisted living facility. Um, that she complained that the, the tunnel was dirty, um, there was not enough light. So I sent an email to Jack Beerso, Jack, Jack introduced me to Mark Hodel, and they did everything in one day, so I want to say thank you, Mark. Uh, he changed the light, he power washed the walls, uh, everything in the same day, so I was like, wow, okay, so thank you. Um, and then I want to also say thank you to Claudia Guy, because I was working the park two days ago, and some of the displayed on the stone water, uh, pons, they are badly faded, you know, have you seen the display with the information? So I took a picture and I sent it to Scott, and Scott said, oh, that one belong to Claudia, and Claudia, uh, found all the file and she said, you know, um, we're gonna send it to the print, because there are like a full display that they need to be changed in our stone water, so thank you, Claudia, you were, you know, you know that I don't have too many patience, you know what I mean, so, um, so when people do that, it's like, you know, Mike, okay? So, I want to say this shout out to these two staff, you know, great, and the other thing I want to mention is something that is gonna happen in our district, and it's back, is the concert on McKee Farm Park. The first one is June twenty first. Okay, so I hope to see you there, June twenty first. The Fitchburg Chamber of Commerce is putting together the concert, so it's a great event, so, uh, it's in District Two, so you're welcome.
All right, thank you. Gabriella?
Uh, just want a quick comment. I, the splash pad in McKee Farms Park is open, as we've announced it before, but it was just really lovely this week to see kids playing, and, uh, especially with the heat, it's been really nice to see that. And then also just wanted to make a note, since it's such a strange thing that we're all up here on the dais without masks on, and it's very strange, but it's also really nice to be able to see people's faces. Um, I just did want to say that I am fully vaccinated, and for those of you that aren't, I really encourage you to do so. I know that Dane County is like one of the best, has some of the best vaccination rates in the country right now. I think we're like getting pretty close to like what is considered herd, herd immunity just in the county, um, which makes me feel pretty comfortable. But anyway, I just wanted to, I thought it was important to note that the reason why we're not wearing masks is because it's starting to get safer, and I hope we continue on that trend going forward. Thanks.
Julia, go ahead.
So you haven't get the vaccine, you can do it in District Two. You can go to the Fitchburg Family Pharmacy, they are continue vaccinated, so do it.
All right, Joe, another thing for you. Go back through their list.
Uh, sorry, I, uh, I, I wanted to say, since, um, Julia mentioned, uh, the Fitchburg Chamber, um, they also contributed to the event, um, on Saturday by, actually, um, Angela paid out of pocket for a, a moving company um, to be able to transport the bike, so, um, thank you to, to Angela, thank you to, um, Big Dog Moving Company in Fitchburg, they did a great job.
All right, anything else anyone forgot? All right, no, that's okay. Uh, direct referrals, first one, Dave, do you want to do this one?
Yes, um, move approval Resolution R one, fifteen, dash, twenty one, authorizing construction contract change order for the twenty twenty street and park improvements.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Yes, they did.
Did Finance approve?
Finance did.
All right, what's this about, Dave?
On West Clayton Road, as we, uh, were putting the new water main in, essentially the street was falling apart. And, uh, when they cut cross-sectional areas, they found it was insufficient, uh, insufficient amount of gravel.
Thank you.
And it was on top of a layer of clay. And so that, um, we looked at that and we said, it's not, uh, not sustainable the way it is, you know, I, I would, that would probably be one of the few roads that was done before I, I, I got on the Board of Public Works, but the, the cost is to, uh, to correct the situation. We're gonna have to dig down, remove the clay. I'm not sure how much, it's, it will be kind of field engineered by city staff.
I've heard that is possibly the worst road in Fitchburg in terms of the deterioration.
Yeah, it, uh, well, you know, it's been there a long time, there's not a lot of traffic, but, uh, you know, as your, your, your own worst enemy, as you get heavy equipment to put in a water main, then it, that, that was the straw that broke the camel's back.
Other questions or comments at all?
Yeah, I thi- I think most of that road goes back to the township days.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, 'cause that had not been, a- after ninety-three, it hadn't been, there hadn't been any work done, and it's only serving about a dozen houses down there. But, um, it was also Kelly Moss Motorsports was there, and they had a fair amount of traffic that was moving in and out, too, so.
All right, seeing nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And opposed, nay. All right, uh, Randy, you want to do this one?
Motion to approve Resolution R dash one, two, one, dash, twenty one. A resolution to support a twenty twenty one Dane County Parks P A R C and Ride Grant Program application for North Fitch Hattery Road Hub Phase One, and requesting Dane County, uh, exercise its municipal pow- park powers within Fitchburg, fi- within Fitchburg.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Finance approve?
Finance did approve, yeah.
All right, do you want to explain this?
I think I'd rather have Misty explain it, just to make sure.
All right.
The dollars, the dollars associated.
I think, Misty, I'll, if I could just say one thing, and this is another one, I think we did, did this last time, too, that we had to apply for this grant, but we had to submit it before we could actually approve as a council. So we submitted for it, we can turn it down if you don't want this money, but we figured this is something that people would want us to apply for, so we did do that. We do have the ability, if we were awarded money, to turn it down if you don't want it, but I think you do. Uh, Misty, do you want to add more to that?
Yeah, this is basically the same as what we did last time, just for a different grant program. So this is through Dane County, and it would help go towards paying for the bike playground at Hub Phase One. So the grant application has been submitted. This resolution then just will be attached to that application, showing that council supports uh, the, the grant application and will abide by all the rules.
Questions at all? Comments? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, that is approved, and it looks like Public Works again, Dave?
Move approval Resolution R one, twenty, two, twenty one, preliminary assessment resolution for the Greenfield Water Main Extension Improvements.
Second.
Sent by Jay, did Public Works approve?
Yes, we did.
Did Finance approve?
Finance approved.
All right, and what's this one?
We'll be extending the water main down, uh, down Sine, um, to essentially loop it in, you know. A little background, previously, there was a private water system in Greenfield called the Gold System, and it eventually failed. The residents requested, um, requested s- city, uh, extend the water from our s- system into them, which the residents paid, but it's a radial, radial system, so this will allow the looping of that system, which provides better water quality, better fire protection. But the properties along, along Sine will be assessed for the, uh, for the, for the cost of the water main in front of their home. They will not be forced to connect to it. But they, they will be, they will be assessed for that, uh, uh, for that pipe in the ground going, going along the road. And so, um, we are, I believe, I believe Bill has bids or has received bids that he, I think was maybe opening today for this, and once we see the costs, then he can develop the preliminary, uh, preliminary cost per, per lot. This is, for those of you who haven't been around, this, this is my, we follow the methodology, this is one of my least favorites, you know, people, it gets very emotional. They have a good well, you know, we don't need that, it's not doing anything for me, and, uh, you can look at it a lot of ways, but, uh, my, my feeling has always been that if you're on city water, you're, you're, um, in a better situation, so just be prepared for that. Uh, there, there's, it's a very emotional issue and a decent amount of money that, that our residents are gonna have to, uh, to foot.
Questions or comments, Jay?
Yeah, the, um, is this gonna complete the loop?
I don't know that for sure, Jay. I know, I, I'd have to talk to Bill. I haven't looked, or I'll, I'll call, um, I'll tell, I'll call Tracy. I, I'm not, I'm not sure if, if that will complete it. I, I suspect it won't.
Yeah, there may be one more.
I think there's still a, a gap in there, but let me talk to Tracy and I'll email the, the council.
That, you know, those are the kinds of pieces of information, I know this was direct referred, but that's the kind of information that should have come back with this when it came back to council. Um, and also like a preliminary estimate of the cost would have been helpful, uh, with this resolution as well, 'cause this is gonna cost, I mean, it's probably gonna be upwards of ten thousand dollars a house for the assessment by the time this gets done.
Yeah, I, I assume Bill had a, Bill had an engineer's estimate, you know, we had not looked at, you know, the estimates from the bid yet, but, uh, you know, I, I was a little, I, I guess I should have asked that question harder, Jay, I apologize.
Well, the, so the, as was mentioned earlier, when that subdivision was built back in the sixties and seventies, it had a, it had a water system, there were fifty, I think it was fifty-eight houses that were attached to this one guy's private well who lived there. Um, but then he was charging them all for their water usage, and he used super crappy subpar pipe, and, uh, for a while throughout the nineties, if you walked through that neighborhood, you could actually see spots where the water was percolating up because there were so many leaks, and there had been so much excavation done to try to fix it, and eventually it just got to the point where the fire department said, look, if there's a fire down there and we attach to a hydrant, it's gonna collapse the pipes. So, um, the residents of the neighborhood eventually ended up being on, our fire department went down there to provide them water. Um, and we had a fire engine parked down there for the better part of a year because the water was no longer safe to drink. So we ran the, the one pipe down, and it was always told that we would have to loop it because right now it just goes down there and ends, and what happens is the water stagnates in the pipe, and that's not good, so, um, I, I would like to know if this is gonna complete the loop, or how much is left, or what the situation's gonna be there.
I'll follow up tomorrow with you, or with, with the council.
All right, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, uh, next meeting is in two weeks. Next comedy of the whole is two weeks in one day. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Sent by Shannon, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
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 And opposed, nay. All right, have a good night, everyone.